And what?
Is it okay? Yeah. Namaste, G.
Namaste, Namaste.
Namaste. Thank you for joining with us since few days we have been gathering from these different countries of Asia. So, I will be very happy to hear from you. Thank you for joining with us.
Namaskar, Namaskar. Well, nice to be seeing all of you. So, what do you want, what do you want me to say?
He is talking to you now.
You, you must have heard the program yesterday.
Yeah, we started uh, oh, yesterday, yeah, the live, live program.
Okay, so, well, nice, you are observing it today, is it? Are you observing the anniversary today? What is it?
Since yesterday, we are celebrating yesterday also.
I have a question to ask you.
Sure, go ahead.
One time, I remember you saying that there were things that Guruji did that you only understood many years later why he did them that way. And I was wondering if you could share some more about um, what we learned through our maturity in our practice, how we see things and how that might change over our studentship.
Okay. So, well, initially, we are all students of Guruji. And when we are students of Guruji, we don't qualify to learn so many things unless we become students of yoga. So, when I became students of yoga, the subject, then I started understanding what was between the lines in what he said, what was underlying in what he said or whatever he said, what was implied in what he said. So, point is, we have to become students of yoga. And it is thereafter that we will be able to understand what he says or what he means to say. You might understand what he says, but that doesn't mean we understand what he means to say. So, I said I could, I did not understand until I became student of the subject itself. So, when I started becoming the student of the subject itself, slowly I started understanding what is yoga. See, yoga is not a worldly subject that somebody teaches and you learn. Elsewhere it happens that somebody teaches and you learn. But yoga is something that you do something with your own embodiment. Your body, your mind, your breath, your senses, your psyche, your consciousness. So, unlike other cases, suppose I have to learn music, I learn violin. So, my teacher teaches me violin, I play a violin, I play that instrument, which is not my part. Learning music or learning any other crafts, craftsmanship or whatever art, uh, the subject is outside us. Even in academics, when we pursue or learn academic subject, the subject is not we ourselves. Like physics, chemistry, mathematics, botany, zoology, geography, astro- astrophysics, the subjects are outside us, we are not subject ourselves. But yoga being adhyatmic subject, that is what we, the world has to understand, which it fails to understand. They think yoga is one of the subjects, like physics, chemistry, mathematics, philosophy, psychology, etc. We take yoga as a, one of the subjects. While here, how we ourselves, our own embodiment, that, that is why we call it adhyatmic. So, we must be familiar with our own body, our own mind. Even in case of same subject like psychology, which seems to be little subjectivistic. A psychologist learns the mind of somebody else. Psychologist doesn't understand his own mind, he doesn't make his own mind as an object. He tries to read the mind of someone else, another person. He tries to analyze the mind of someone else. So, the object, the object of his subject is outside, even in case of psychology, even in case of philosophy. While in yoga, we ourselves are subject, are object of our subject, the content of our subject. So, learning yoga is something that way, that first you have to become students of yoga. By being students of D K Sainья, by being students of Guruji, you will not really pursue the subject. It is only run up, it's the starting point, foundational point, it's excavation, uh, groundwork done in the beginning, at some stage you have to become students of yoga. So, when I became student of yoga, then I started some, understanding better what is it teaching. It is not something I have to look at him and follow. I, it's not something that I have to hear what he says and follow it, interpret it. We have to deal with our own embodiment. And that's why it's a unique subject. So, when I became student of yoga, so I started understanding the subject of yoga as pre- presented by Patanjali Yajnebalka and other yogis, uh, the sejes and seers. Then I started figuring out what Guruji was trying to say. So, point is, we have to become students of subject of yoga. The subject of yoga comes in Patanjali Yoga Sutra, subject of yoga comes in Bhagavad Gita, subject of yoga comes in Upanishads, subject of yoga comes in classical texts of yoga, such as Hattie Yoga, Prasiddhi Kaaghe and Sammita, Shival Sammita, Siddha Siddhanta, Paddeeti. So, whatever available resources were there, I started reading, I started hearing about, many things cannot be read. The entire yoga cannot come in book form. Like, I cannot teach entire yoga, which I have often said in the class, I cannot teach the whole of yoga in a channel of classes, channel of retreats, channel of workshops. This now today yoga is imparted, you either have regular classes or you have retreats, you have weekends, you have workshops, you have conventions. Oh, yoga also has to come by dialogue. Now suppose you want to hear about yoga, I will talk to, talk about yoga, which is perhaps compatible and suitable for you and I will try to talk about yoga to you. But that is not everything, you should also be hearing me, suppose myself and Guruji are discussing yoga, you should be hearing that. Because I will, Guruji will not talk to you that particular matter, nor I will talk to you that particular matter, which I might be discussing with Guruji. So, when I discuss yoga with other person, another person, you should, people should be hearing, that's why hearing is very important. So, myself and Abhijata might be, you might be asking something, I will be answering something, you might be discussing something, you people should be hearing that, which will not come your way otherwise. I won't open that topic for you. The topic which I will open for Abhijata or the topic which I will open for someone else will not be opened for you. In class, the class is meant for you, so I have to teach what is meant for you only. So, suppose I am in a class, I am taking a class, in sense, I am the student of a class and I have a teacher in the class who is teaching me, it is important that you hear that as well. Because that you will never get to hear if you are being taught. So, when I am being taught, it's something that you can hear. So, we have long tradition of the hearing tradition. Like if you see in Upanishads, in Bhagavad Gita, it's a dialogue. Bhagavad Gita is not a treatise. It's a dialogue between Krishna and Arjuna, which took place 5,000 years back. And we are able to learn something out of a dialogue which took place 5,000, 5,000 years back, more than 5,000 years back. Upanishads, there are dialogues that she, Guru and Shisya, Acharya and Shisya are in dialogue. Now, that took place ages ago. And we are, that's why our scriptures are structured that way, that we are able to hear the dialogue. See, one of the Upanishads, Dattatraya is teaching yoga to his student. Now, that is in some different age altogether, different era. So, Dattatra and Shankruti, Shankruti was his disciple. So, it's a dialogue between Dattatraya and Shankruti. Now, they are not our contemporaries, but we are able to get to their dialogue. It can be, like today we record the dialogues, record the speeches and future generations are able to hear. Now, what I talk to you will not be something the that somebody will be able to talk after 500 years. But after 500 years, if this is available, they will know what was discussed 500 years ago. So, our tradition is such that it is not just treatises. So, we are able to hear so much, which is 500 years back, thousand years back, 2,000 years back, 5,000 years back, 10,000 years back, million years back. In Vishnu Purana, there is a dialogue between the preceptor and the disciple, with regard to yoga, subject of yoga, which we are dealing. Now, that is, that was in Vishnu Purana. Vishnu Purana is prior to Mahabharat. Vishnu Purana is prior to Mahabharat. So, that dialogue is available today. Just as today we are able to maintain these audio files, so we will usually last for 500 years, thousand years, 2,000 years. We have been having that from time immemorial. So, much has to be heard about yoga, not just contemporary speaker, but even previous speakers. So, we are able to hear the, the speakers who were thousand years back, 2,000 years back, 10,000 years back, million years back even. So, hearing is so important and in our tradition, we provide lot of scope for hearing and we have a, something called a satsanga. So, what Gyaneshwar spoke can be heard today by satsanga. What Tukaram Maharas spoke 400 years back can be heard today by, in satsanga. In satsanga, somebody will relate you that Gyaneshwar said this, Tukaram said this, Ramda said this. Now, we, they are not our contemporaries, but we hear them because our, our satsanga tradition. They tell us about the gospel of people who are no more. Like, you might have read the book of Gospel of Sri Ramakrishna. What is Gospel of Ramakrishna? It is not that he wrote a book. Like Guruji wrote a book Light on Yoga, he did not write a book, it's a gospel. Now, that gospel is still available today for us. That speak Ramakrishna Paramahams. This is what he said, this is what he spoke. So, we have maintained this oral auditory tradition and it is still continuing. So, somebody gives disco, kind of discourse on Shiva and Bhagavatam. So, in satsanga, a person who has understood what Bhagavatam means relates it to us and therefore this hearing of yoga is more important. Now, in our own embodiment, I have often described that our embodiment is a book by itself. So, come, come down to pay, uh, down to earth, you stand in tadasan. The tadasan itself is not just a posture. There is something to be read in tadasan, so tadasan becomes a book. So, our embodiment itself is a book. And that is how one has to become student of yoga. Don't try to emulate your teacher's tadasan merely. That is not we all and end all, it has to be done to whatever extent possible. But more important is that I must read my own tadasan. That means my tadasan becomes a book for me to be read. Shirsatan becomes a book for me to be read. Any asan becomes a book for me to be read. And therefore, I can, I should be reading this embodiment. That is very important, that is how one becomes student of yoga. Don't just do asan and don't just do pranayama, as Ayengar yoga is to do asan and pranayama properly. Don't just do them, there is much to read, become aware of the what is the matter to read there. So, it's, I, I often call in my classes, it's a readatory. Like you have observatory, where you go and observe. Library is a place where you go and read the books. So, it becomes readatory. So, our embodiment should become an observatory, tadasan, observatory. You observe and learn so many things. Tadasan as a laboratory, in laboratory you experiment and experiment gives you some knowledge and wisdom. So, treat your tadasan as a laboratory. So, you learn yoga, so it becomes original yoga, first-hand yoga. And that is so important to become students of yoga. So, recently I have said in classes, don't be just in a duetary. I arrived at this, these words, you know, we have a word, there are words such as laboratory, observatory, etc. So, why not duetary, a place where we should do, where, a place where we should do. Duetary, go, go to tadasan and do the tadasan and be in duetary. What are you doing? What can be done? How something should be done? What is being done by you, what is being done by tadasan, you do, tadasan does. Is that right? So, it has become worldly subject, we think we do tadasan. The fact of the matter is, tadasan does something. So, the tadasan is doing something, try to identify. You do shirsatan, shirsatan does something, identify. So, what I do, what my body does, what my breath does, what my mind does, for that to become shirsatan, for that to become tadasan. And now, we experience in tadasan shirsatan, we don't do it. Suppose you are very good cook, will you just cook all the dishes which are given to you by, by menu card, will you just cook it? The food is not merely meant to be cooked, it must be tasted, it must be experienced. So, if you do shirsatan, shirsatan is experienced, you don't have to experience, you do experience. Tadasan is done, you do experience. That means what? You do something that you don't experience, you only register. You only register, I did this, harden, tighten, straighten, stretch, elongate, extend, deflate, inflate, concave, convex, this is what I did, all biomechanics. But tadasan does something, it is also in duetary. Shirsatan is doing something which you can experience. Like you don't just cook the food, the food is meant to be tasted, the food is to be intaken, food is to be eaten. You just don't, do not just cook the food and keep it. So, do not just do the shirsatan tadasan, watch what it does. Because you, it is something for you to taste, feel, experience. So, there is a duetary. In shirsatan tadasan, you have learnatory. It's a place where you have to learn, what do you learn, how do you learn? You are learned, in asana, you are learned. See, I am sitting in front of laptop and now it shows me myself as well, is that right? So, it shows me the myself like mirror. So, asanas are mirror-like. You can see, you are not only seen object, you can see. So, it reflects. So, yo- yoga is a subject where there is, it reflects. It's not only you do, you do, you do and accomplish, it reflects. And it reflects and tell you, tells you how you are. How is your mind, is the mind placid, is the mind turbulent? So, you come to know about, you are also read. So, you read shirsatan, shirsatan reads you. You read tadasan, at the same time, tadasan reads you. This is the marvel of adhyatmic book. If you read Bhagavad Gita, it is not reading a book on economics, politics, physics, chemistry. When you read Bhagavad Gita, you are read. You are read, not only you have read. But in case of book on physics, chemistry, academic subject, you read and then you have read. Not you are read. While in yoga, you are read. So, there is something to learn, something to study, something like in front of mirror, you get the reflection. In front of photograph, you know the object, which is of the photograph, object in the photograph. But suppose in place of photograph, there is a mirror, you will see your own reflection. So, you are seer and you are seen. You are seer as the entity, entity which is called reflected entity. And you see yourself, which is a reflection. So, Bhagavad Gita is such a book, if you read, you are read. Upanishads are such, uh, books, if you read, you are read, they are about you. That is adhyatmic aspect, that it is, it is about you, yoga is about you. And therefore, to become student of yoga is to become student of your embodiment. And that is, when I started becoming student of yoga, I started understanding why Guruji said attend to arms, attend to legs, attend to back, attend to spine. Otherwise, I merely attended. I did not realize that it is the mirror and it is reflecting my state, it is reflecting myself, it is reflecting my aspects. So, that's why I said that when I became student of yoga, understand chitta guruti, chitta bhogi, chitta processes, chitta function, chitta states, chitta roles, acts, functions, purpose and what chitta is, how it is constituted. So, one has to become student of one sole embodiment, that is adhyatma. Otherwise, today, more often yoga has become a kind of health scheme, something which keeps you healthy, that's all. So, it has become physical culture. So, you just try to do it and you think by doing it, you will keep fit, you will keep fine. But yoga is not a consumeristic subject going through. It is a part of it. It's an aspect of it which will keep you motivated. If you feel that you are gaining something that you are looking for. Or you are gaining something which you did not envisage, then you are motivated. So, it's only motivator, the yoga that we are doing today. We get motivated to continue. Week after week, month after month, year after year, decade after decade. Why? We are gaining, we are getting. We get what we want or we get even which we had not envisaged, we get it. So, we are happy, doubly happy. So, it has become consumeristic subject. By classical yoga, it is not consumeristic subject, it's a subject for realization. The Adhyatmic process says, the object of knowledge at a supreme level is yourself. Not knowing the whole universe. In a modern size, they try to know the universe. They will try to know all that is around, visible, invisible, raw, subtle, living, non-living, galactic, extra-galactic. They will try to know all that is around them. But they don't bother to know oneself. That's why our wisdom, ancient wisdom, Upanishad wisdom says, knowing thyself. What is called as knowing thyself is the unique subject matter of yoga. So, when I became aware of it, then I started understanding why Guruji did yoga. He did not do yoga for the reason that you are all doing and we were all doing. We are doing to keep fine, keep fit until the last breath. We should not have any hassles and problems. We want to have hassle-free life throughout the life, hassle-free. And that's why we do yoga. Guruji did not do for that. So, his motive was higher and this was circumscribed. So, what we look for is circumscribed by process of yoga and we are targeting it. We are aiming at it. I want wellness, well-being in my life. Now, that is something which is circumscribed while we should be aiming at something else. Which is called Adhyatmic knowledge, know thyself. We don't do yoga for know thyself. We do yoga for keep thyself fit. Keep thyself happy. Keep thyself successful. Keep thyself accomplished. We don't want to know the self, we want to see that self is accomplished. We don't want to know ourselves, but we want to be accomplished. So, the Adhyatma tells us all about this. So, when I became student of Adhyatma, the wisdom of Upanishad, the exact wisdom of spiritual pursuit, Paramarthas, that's called Paramarthas. Supreme goal. That's a supreme goal. Then, all other goals are circumscribed. We don't have to bother about other goals, minor goals. Like one million dollars contains ten dollars, we don't have to strive for ten dollars. If you are getting a billion dollars. Ten is part of it. So, our wellness and well-being that we look for is a part of yoga. So, we should not be targeting that. It's like targeting every ten dollar, every ten dollar, every ten dollar. So, the larger will always include the party, part of it. So, ten dollars is part of billion dollars. So, wellness, well-being is a part of something that we should be aiming in yoga. That's why I said, when I started understanding yoga, not that I have understood. When I started understanding yoga, I started understanding what Guruji was teaching. So, my perception of his teaching was totally different than most of the others. Others were looking, what can I get? How much can I get? And what if I get it? What is the advantage of getting it? Like, sorry to say with little harsh words. Today, we learn yoga to become teachers of yoga. And materially successful teachers of yoga. I'm sorry to say this, but this is the reality. We are looking at yoga as a profession. Means to earn money, name, pay money, recognition, not only money. The students pay your fee and also the students revere you, they fall at your feet as well. You don't go and fall at the feet of a paymaster if you are in some job and service or whatever occupation. You don't fall at the feet of your paymaster. Here, you teach, they learn, not only learn, they fall at your feet. They revere you, they give you status. They give you a status. And that is one of the important proteins for our I-ness. So, this is what is happening to yoga. It has become a subject to be pursued. It's not a subject. It is something in pursuance of yourself. Anyway, I think that should be enough. Okay?
One last question if any of the students want to ask.
Yeah.
Yes, Kathy? Prashanji, what I want to ask is.
Sure, go ahead.
This Adhyatmic supposed to be very much subjective. It cannot be very collective. Am I correct?
How do you say not collective?
Like as a community together.
See, we ourselves, each one of us is a huge community by ourselves. That's why I have spoken about internal social. Internal social. We are not unicellular. We are multicellular. Hundreds of trillions of cells compose our existence. Each of the cell is a living cell. That means we are highly populous embodiment. And we have the population of the cells. And like we say, human population, animal population, plant population of the world. Now, that is estimated or paraged, even counted, and we come to know how many trees are there on the globe. How many people are there on the globe? How many elephants are there on the globe? How many lions are there on the globe? How many cats and dogs are there on the planet? Similarly, we are cells. So, it's an internal social. We are not unicellular. Individual, when it refers to ourselves. We are huge body, huge assembly of cells. Like a nation means huge body of people. You can't have a nation with one person. It's a body of people and you say it's a nation. Similarly, we are body of cells and therefore, it's a social. So, subjectivism here, it is not individualism. In our embodiment, as Guruji had said many times, we have cells which are Brahmanic nature, Kshatra nature, Vaishya nature, Sudra nature. So, that's the complete society. Anywhere on the planet, you will have these four classes of people. Any country, any population of human beings, ideally should have all kinds of people who are Brahmanic nature, who learn, study, impart. Kshatria nature, who administrate, who manage, administrate, rule, defend, defensive, offensive aspect required for a country are handled, administration is handled, defensive, offensive things are handled by them. Vaishya is a mercantile community. We need a mercantile community which is trying to give and take something. And we need servitude class serving. So, the chatumrnya concept is not just of a particular community, it is there in all society. So, Guruji used to say that we have huge society comprising of Brahmin, Kshatriya, Vaishya and Sudra. They are all required. And they are very much there. So, we should see that they are kept in a good organized way rather than disorganized way or rather being at loggerhead, let make a community of it. So, we are a huge community. And that's why when I teach, I don't say, look at me and follow. I say, you go in, look within yourself and then learn. I draw you in. I don't draw you towards me. While I teach, I don't draw you towards me. Which is the beginner's play, beginner's play case it happens, you say, look at me and follow. I do Tikkunasan, look at me, follow. I do Shirsatan, look at me and follow. Now, that is for only beginners. A stage comes where we have to say, look in. Look at your spine, look at your back, look at your chest, look at your leg, look at your waist and then learn. So, that's how the subject of yoga is where you are turned towards you. And you are not a singular entity, first-person pronoun. I may attempt said in the class, I don't know how many of you have heard about it. The I, they say, first-person pronoun, singular. I say, I is plural. And I also contains that in me. So, I, my body, my breath, my mind. So, it is that. It is not me, it is that. So, understand the subjectivism which is a unique dimension here. That's why in yoga, you are not in autism. You know that disease of autism. Is that right? Is it autism? Like a child which is suffering from autism, we know what is the plight of the parents. But yoga doesn't take us to autism. Because we are a huge community. We are huge community by ourselves. The global population is said to be eight billion. The global population, human population is said to be eight billion plus. But each one of our embodiment has a population of the order of three hundred, four hundred trillions of cells. Where is three hundred, four hundred trillion population and where is eight billion? And we say, oh, huge population of the planet, eight billion. But we, each of us is three hundred plus trillion. So, it is the subjectivism of Adhyatma diverges that you are a universe. You are a universe, you are a, you are microcosm. You are a miniature universe. And therefore, although yoga seems to be, somebody is becoming self-centric. Apparently, it seems for a layman that somebody is self-centric. We are universal-minded in yoga. It is not autism. It is not autism. So, yoga is such a subject that one has to identify the universality within oneself. So, it's a totally different idea to be a subjectivistic aspect of yoga. Subjectivism is not good otherwise in social framework. But here, the idea of subjectivism is totally different. Subjectivism is, we are universe, we contain universe. We are timeless people. Each one of you is a timeless person. It's not only that you are a person of twenty-first century. It's not that we exist between our birth and death for whatever seventy, eighty, ninety, hundred years. We are timeless people. The yoga philosophy tells us the reality. And therefore, the objective of Adhyatma is something that each one of us will try to become universal. It's not that we must be a community which is idealism for us to be human beings. That we must be connected, related, etc., etc. And we must have our own community, etc. But within ourselves, we have universality. And universality is nowhere close to autism. Yoga seems to be autism, somebody is self-centered, somebody is selfish, somebody shuts the doors and goes into seclusion and practices yoga. One goes to seclusion to go to universe. To go to universal realm within oneself. So, that's how yoga should be understood, the Adhyatma should be understood. Okay?
Thank you, G. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. So, wishing you all the best for whatever remaining celebration that you have. Nice that you have got together. And now, you have got together. In yoga, you should not be aware of next person to you. Do you understand? If you are aware of next person, your yoga is detonated. If you are aware of who is around you, behind you, next to you, in front of you. Now, you must have community consciousness. But while in yoga, you have to go to whole universality within you to shun your sociality here. If you are social-minded and doing yoga, your yoga will never happen. Hope you take it in right perspective. Okay?
Thank you. Namaste.
Namaste. Thank you. Nice to see you that you are all together to celebrate Guruji's birthday anniversary.
Thank you, G.
Nice to see you, somebody familiar faces. Namaskar.
Namaskar.
Namaskar. Thank you. Thank you.